At this time, I call the November meeting of the County Commission to order. We have with us tonight Ben Dawkins from the Martin's Crossroads Church to give our invocation. Ben, if you would, proceed over to this podium. Following the invocation, if you remain standing, Commissioner Henderson will lead the pledge of leaders to the flag.
Let's all bow heads. Father God, we come to you tonight in Jesus' holy name, Lord God. We just thank you, Lord God, for this awesome community that you have put us in, Lord God. I just lift up each and every one here tonight, Lord. I just pray, God, that they know you, Lord God. And God, I just pray, God, that we have a closer relationship with you, Lord God, because we cannot do this on our own, Lord God. I know you're the only one that can purify our hearts, Lord God. So I just pray tonight, if there's anyone in here tonight that don't know you, Lord God, I just want them to understand that you want them to know you, Lord. And, Lord God, I lift up each and every one of these county commissioners, Lord God. I just pray, God, that your mercy upon them, Lord God, as they do their job, Lord God. I just pray, God, that they come closer to you, God, that they get in your precious word, Lord God, that sets us free, Lord God, that helps us, God, that lets us know, God, how you want us to live, Lord God. And I know, God, for us to have wisdom, God, to make the right decisions, Lord God, I just know you can take this precious town, this little town right here, God, and just bless so many, Lord God. There's so many people out there that need Jesus Christ, God. And I thank you for this opportunity, Lord God, to lift up your son's holy name, Lord God. And I just thank you for everything, God. I thank you for each and every one here tonight, God. I just pray a great blessing upon them, Lord God. And I just pray protection, God, of all our leaders, God, all our first responders, Lord God. There's so many, God, that are under this administration right here, God. I just pray, God, that you just help guide them, Lord God, and let them know how important, how important it is, God, to put you first and submit to you, Lord God, so that we can do your will in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, the new leader of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Item four is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I trust you read them, they're in your book. I undertake a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? There is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda. We are going to, without objection from the commissioners, I'm going to add Mr. William Hunter of Savannah Bay Property Owners Association, is that correct? Homeowners Association. The reason I'm doing this tonight, Mr. Hunter had called to be placed on the agenda last week, a week before last. In some way, it was, it wasn't put on that. That's our fault. Our apology. I apologize to you on that, but we'll give you your five minutes, and you'll be able to speak. And we're going to place that with, under item number seven. That will become item number eight. Madam Clerk, then just for the record, move everything back like it's supposed to be there.
Yes, sir.
Start to nine, ten level again. No objection. That's what we'll do. Is that motion that the agenda be approved without addition?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carried. Items six, eight, Office of Emergency Services Director Casey Broom.
Good evening, Chairman and commissioners, as always. It's an honor to be here. You have my submitted reports, and I'll answer any questions that I can for you.
Any questions, Mr. Broom, or Director Broom, on this report? Mr. Tankersley?
Yeah, I'm sure it's probably in here. I just hadn't seen it. But you said at the work session that you was going to have a percentage of calls, the number of calls out of the 220.
Yes, sir. I'll email that to you, and the 14th or 15th of this month will be 90 days for a complete report on the operations in a time period. I wanted to look at data over at least a three-month period before we, you know, break it all the way down for you. So that way, any intricacies will be available for you to question.
Any other questions, Director Broom? Not thank you. Six B is the Recreation Department. Director Glaze is not here. His uncle passed away, and the wake is tonight, so he is excused to go to the funeral home. Let's remember him and the Parks family, and Glaze family, in our prayers. You have this report that's in there, though. Six C is the Finance Department Director Ernie Dawson.
Chairman, commissioners, you have my credit report, and if there's nothing, I don't have anything to add if there's any questions. If not, Chairman, I'd like to go over the account balance.
Let's go.
So here are our major fund balances. The general fund, $2,770,71. SPOST seven, $1,464,77. The American Rescue Plan Fund, $1,109,165. The Solid Waste Fund, $536,979. The T SPOST Fund, $408,947. The Water Reserve Fund, $329,384. The Emergency Fund, $299,479. The Water Fund, $251,837. The E911 Fund, $195,271. And the SPOST six Fund, $152,312. There are several other funds, but those are our major funds. The total, the total cash in bank for all of our funds is $7,820,190. Our investment accounts, our Raymond James 18-month CDs. I've got this backwards. Our Raymond James 12-month CDs, $1,125,000. Our Raymond James 18-month CDs, $500,000. Our enhanced savings account of Raymond James, $255,678. And we are holding, at the time that this was, on December, on October 31st, we were holding $250,000 from a CD that had matured, and it was deposited in the enhanced savings account on November the 2nd. Our total in the Raymond James accounts, $2,130,678. Our total cash and cash equivalents at the end of October is $9,950,868.
Any questions, Director Dawson? If not, thank you for that report. Six D is the Public Works Director Randy Fisher.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Before you have the monthly reports and breakdowns from some of our departments, and I would just like to add that we are still issuing new home building permits. That means the county is growing. I know some counties have dropped off, but we still are issuing permits and have new people moving into the county and building new homes. Is there any questions I could ask, answer for you at this time?
Director Fisher, I guess we all know the south end part of the water system was down. We had maintenance work to be done to the double branches tower, which was supposed to be about a day process, six-hour process, or something. A valve broke, stem broke, something broke.
Valve, stem, yes, sir.
Had been in the ground since 1988, and it just threw us, it threw everything out of whack. But we had to go, I think, several of the road department people were out all night long. Some went home, I think, about 2:30. Anyway, most, most everybody was back on. It affected about 1,000 houses, 1,200 houses. And most of them were back on with low pressure, but they were back on by lunch, I think.
Yes, sir.
By lunch Wednesday. We all under a boiling process that EPD does. If you check the county website, I think Code Red has sent it out several different times. We notified all the news media in Augusta around. But if you're on the south end of the county, the boiling process, where you're drinking water, or you're making tea, it's not for taking baths and showers, that kind of stuff. But it's recommended that you boil it. It could be some bacteria in there. We don't think it is, but it could be. But we following the guidelines of environmental protection. And that will stay in place until after the lines are tested. They won't be tested until Monday. And the reason for that is because the state couldn't get to them to do it, and they don't work over the weekends. So the testing will be done Monday, since it's a state, we hope, Tuesday afternoon on Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
We will have the report, and we'll notify the news media and Code Red. If you're not on Code Red, you need to try to do that, because that keeps up with all the county emergency stuff. So they'll call your cell phone or your house phone and leave you a message and tell you what's going on. But that's kind of where we are with the southern end. It's a list on the website. It's got all the roads that were affected on, on this end. It's basically everything from Partridge Town Road to Columbia County line. It's basically what it is. If you down past Wells Road on 220, then you off of it. But Maxum Road is down 220 east, I guess, is down to about, I can't think of that subdivision. What's the name of the subdivision?
Long, Longco.
Yeah, Longco. Yeah, that's your Longco. So that's, that's the affected area. But hopefully, everything is, is going back up, and we'll be sending out notices letting you know when you don't have to boil anymore.
Yes, sir.
And I want to commend Director Fisher, our Water Superintendent Mike Newman. I know for a fact that he came to work about 4 o'clock Hughes Day morning, getting ready with people that were cleaning out the water tank. And he never went home, until sometime Wednesday night, I think.
Yes, Wednesday.
He was out well over 24 hours, and he never went home. And all the people that were involved in it. Ashland Contractors was called in to help with the part of the, on the valve that broke out of Washington. And the company that we have a maintenance contract with looks after our three water tanks. So it was all involved, and there was a lot, a lot going on all night long that night. But anyway, hopefully, things will be back to normal by Wednesday.
That's our hope. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, Director Fisher? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item seven is Mr. Al Gray. Mr. Gray, you, about as regular as we are, you know the deal. State your name and address, and your five-minute time limit.
Thank you, Mayor Davis.
That's what he used to say, too.
I'm Al Gray, 2573 Salem Church Road.
Chairman Norman and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. In September 2000, John Cox purchased 140 acres at the end of publicly maintained Boots Branch Road. Access to the road was a matter of June 28, 2021 case brought by Cox's heir, Patricia Kishen, and her son against Lincoln County. Exhibit one, the plaintiffs were allowed to gate off the road, provided that their gate was within a 50-foot easement for the core engineers carved out of her property. The plaque exhibit two, prepared by James Madison on January 17, 2022, shows that the installed gate might barely fit, but the plaque shows that moving the gate farther back down the kitchen's property couldn't, could not. The kitchens decided to put the gate as close to pot as possible to their property line at the end of the county's maintained road. Now they're seeking to control the public road beyond their property line by summoning law enforcement about hunter parking. The pickup shown in exhibit next has 95 inches of width. Most trucks hunters use have 105 inches. By putting the gate where they have, no one can hunt the core land, because the gate blocks the existing parking and turnaround area. Also, there's no room to park on the core frontage of the road that's left. Exhibit two A shows that Chairman Norman asserted that no one with county government was known to have authority to deny that there was public maintenance and use, yet planning commissioner Madison did so with this plaque. Dangerous confusion erupted. Exhibit four is a sheriff report that says the deputy, quote, "did not find any probable cause of criminal activity due to the road not being privately owned." However, the open record request sent covering the date of that report saw a note allegedly existing that Hawke-White Woodall was asked to sign, excepting criminal trespasses charges if he ever went beyond the gate on the freeway. Allegedly, his grandfather-in-law, former state patrolman and Lincoln deputy Marcy Remson learned of the note and demanded of county officials that it be eliminated. When I asked Chairman Norman about the incident last week, he responded, it was him, it was he to whom the Remson brought the note, Matt. Since the note existed, what in the world is going on with that report? I emailed you information, all of y'all, a couple weeks ago, about the Augusta equipment scandal, where city men and equipment were used or being used on tracks inside the kitchen's gate, for which Johnny Owens and Troy Meeks had to pay kitchens for the easements to access the publicly maintained road. That's in the deed, in the easement agreement. In exhibit five, author Austin Rhodes mentions Richmond counties were looking for hunting property. After Meeks and Owens paid back $5,455 to Augusta, Owens installed infrastructure for six travel trailers. Several were moved in and hard piped, some were hard piped into the septic tank. Commissioner Clyde told me that the trailer park was, quote, "a temporary hunting camp, requiring removal of the units once a year." I walked there just about every other day for years and never saw two of them moved. Your ordinance for temporary and conforming uses contains no provision for hunting camps, only construction or medical disability. That's in exhibit six. Fannie Mae foreclosed against kitchens in 2014. It sold 90 acres back to kitchens in 2018. The realtor for them told me that the access was so limited that kitchens was the only one that could buy it. I believe that file up came into existence when Lincoln County approved exhibit seven, a revision, five years after the date of the original plaque that's not available anywhere. The revision added a 1,300-foot easement that is impossible to build, forcing Meeks and Owens to buy a twisted 20-foot easement. You have confused law enforcement. A public hunting area denied to public is given over to exclusive use of a hunting glove that isn't legal under your ordinance. A plaintiff who won enormously from county incompetence and looks like she's gotten more, plus a planning commissioner with a conflict of interest that has hurt our access rights. You say that you won't reengage the judge because you simply must, given the facts and the position you put on him and us, or put us into. I have spoken my last on this matter with you. Removing Mr. Madison's conflict of interest is my priority, as is restoring the rule of law in Lincoln County. I add on exhibit eight, that was something that came up in the previous meeting. It shows how our county was willing to work behind the scenes against one of the oldest families here. I inherited Noah's goats from my Hogan heirs, but you seem to be tied up with one here. Thank you.
Item eight is the addition that we had. Mr. Hunter, if you will, if you would just come to the mic, speak closely, and I have a hard time hearing it, even with this box up here.
Just a hot spot?
You'll, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is William Hunter. I'm the president of the HOA at Savannah Bay. I'll start off by saying thank you, Commissioner Norman and commissioners, for allowing me to speak. I come to you today to talk to you about another water issue that, I guess it's water issue night for some reason. But anyway, about two years ago, we started developing some water problems out at Savannah Bay. Savannah Bay has a water system that was burned over to Lincoln County. I don't know if it was seven to 10 years ago. Since that time, we have grown. We're about 30% bigger than what we were. There's about 14 homes out there now. And the issue that we have is, is that we don't have, can I say, the water pressure that is needed for all of the homes. Now, last year, I'm sorry, back in January, Chairman Norman came out to a meeting that we had, and we greatly appreciate you coming out and talking with us. And we went over some of the issues that we have with the water system. It's been failing, I guess it's failed twice in the past year. And when Mr. Seymour was the waterworks person, he came out and worked on it multiple times. Since that time, we've had constant issues where we've had a lot of sediment that has gotten into the system. It's been flushed, but we still haven't. The concern is, is that we're getting the sediment into our water heaters and other parts of the system, and it hasn't stopped. There's three or four different options that we have. One of them is, is that they can go in and flush the tank. And the second thing that they can do is, is they can go in and replace the pumps or put new filters on. Two things that Mr. Seymour had brought out was, is that they were going to have to replace part of the system that constantly, that every time it lightens or storms, that it fails, and they have to go back in and reset it. I don't know if that's going to take rebuilding the, the automatic box or, or whatever. But that is a issue that we have today, where they have to come out and reset the system. As far as, Mr. Seymour also brought up the fact that he would be able to get us some pumps for those houses that are on a higher elevation to raise the pressure for water for those homes. And there's about three or four homes that are up on the higher elevation. I don't know what those pumps cost, and I do not know what the timetable is for those to arrive. But it would probably save money if we went ahead and replaced some of the pumps that are already there to save the money and having to put up and all the installation and that type of stuff. Okay? That's the big issue that we have at the present time. I know y'all wouldn't want to go into your bathroom, turn the spigot on, and have orange water or sediment getting into your tub. I don't think anybody would want to take a bath in, in that. It's just that we're growing. And we know, right now, we have over 65 lots that have, that were sold back in 2007. And like I said, we've grown by over 30%. And some of the other homeowners have called me multiple times and said, we're having a problem with water pressure as well as the sediment. We've also, I know they've tried to do something with the chlorine that they put into the water. It's really strong in certain areas, and in other areas, it isn't. So I don't know if it's just that the water system has to be revamped, that they go back in and look at the system, or whatever. But we're asking for your, your help with this.
Mr. Hunter, I don't think you're asking for anything that you don't deserve. I, I don't. Let me ask you something. Are you available one day next week?
Yes, sir.
If you would, give Sherry your phone number.
Yes, sir.
I, you know, Robbie's gone, and he knew a lot about that system.
Yes, sir.
I can tell you now, I know nothing. I mean, when y'all, when I was at the meeting and he was talking about all this stuff, I might as well have been flying a kite, because I didn't, I don't understand all that.
Yes, sir.
That stuff there. What I want to do is get the county's engineer, that does, the engineer involved the county's water project.
Yes, sir.
To Lincoln.
Okay.
I want to get him down here, and I want to get you, and let's go over it with him. And Randy Fisher is Robbie's replacement now, and he totally unfamiliar, I'm sure, what you just said. But I want to get, get you to, and get, get him down here, and we'll meet you up there somewhere.
That'll, I'll.
And find out what we can do. You give me your number, and I'll get in touch with you, and I'll arrange that meeting.
I can do that, sir. In fact, I think your secretary has.
You have, Sherry.
All you have to do is give me a call, sir. I'm there most of the time. I think there's one day next week where I have to be at the hospital. But other than that...
Well, I'll get in touch with you myself.
I've got a question.
Please, Mr. Tankersley.
Is it a volume problem? I mean, do you have enough water there? It just doesn't have.
I think we have the water. We just don't have the, the pressure. And the history behind the system, I'd have to go back in and find the books to it. But I think what it had transpired is, is this is an older system. There's three pumps to it. If one pump fails, the other two pumps upgrade or up push and increase the pressure. If they don't, then the water in the tank starts settling and going down, and then it gets into the sediment. And that's one of the things that we would ask, is, is that we get that tank flushed. That tank hasn't been flushed, from what I understand, since its conception. Okay?
Let me, let me just stop you where we, where we can move on. I don't want to set a precedent. We, we'll reach out to you, and I'll get the engineers.
Yes, sir.
And we'll, we, our number's got a problem. We'll, we'll try to get this taken care of.
Okay, sir.
But I'll be in touch with you this, next week.
All right, sir. Thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, and thank y'all for coming, too. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, item number, well, we, we at nine now. They're going up. FY24 DHS supported transportation service. The clerk will present this on behalf of Director Blunt. She just got this, this week, is that right?
Yes, sir. She just received it in the mail Tuesday.
It's simple. It's something we do every year. Just, they pay us to bring people to the senior center and take food to their homes. Clerk McKell, if you will.
Yes, sir. Director Blunt has explained that this is an annual contract we do every year. She uses these funds to, for congregate senior meal transportation, as well as transportation to doctor's appointments, grocery stores, group trips, hair appointments, whatever's necessary. And the leisure services van is the one that does most of these trips. It's a grant for $45,000, and it's the same as what it was last year.
Director Dawson, you have anything to add?
No, sir. I believe we should go ahead and do this grant again.
Okay. Is there a motion that we accept this from the Department of Human Services to grant, I think you said 45,000, up to 40,000. I don't think we use that much. We might, but I don't think we do. But it's up to that. I know this wasn't at the work session, but it's given to us after that. But we need to go ahead and get it, because it's, looks like it dated July 23rd.
Yes, sir.
And we're halfway through with it. Is there a motion that we, that gives me and the clerk to start to sign the contract?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item 10 is the 2024 alcoholic beverage. Item 10 is the 2024 alcoholic beverage renewals. Clerk McKell.
Yes, sir. I only have two to bring before you this evening. I'm still missing documentation for the other two. They did not get it to me in time. The first one is Mr. Sam Patel, owner of LW's Bait and Tackle, asking for a Class A beer and wine off-premises license.
Okay, you heard the request from Mr. Patel, LW's. Is there a motion that we grant Class A?
I'll move.
Second?
Commissioner Tankson made the motion. Commissioner Collins, I mean Clyde, second. Any discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Clerk McKell.
The second one is for Mr. Eric Kinnerly, commander of the American Legion Post 194, for a Class C liquor, beer, and wine on premises.
Okay, you heard it from Mr. Colonel Lee at the American Legion. Is there a motion that we renew his?
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known, say an aye. Clerk McKell.
That's it. The other two still need documentation.
Well, I'm showing Al Holloway at Rocky Brand.
Yes, sir. They didn't bring me the last of their application.
Oh, pile it. All right. Take care of that one. What happens now? Is that a penalty? Or they still got some time to do it?
They still have time. They can bring it before us in December.
All right. Item 11 is the stretch and maintenance agreement directed by.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we...
You would pull that microphone down. I can't hear.
How's this, Mr. Chairman?
There you go. I can hear now. The whole world can hear.
That's my Elvis impression right there. Chairman, Commissioners, in our work session, we covered this preventative maintenance program with Stryker. We own three Stryker Power Pro stretchers. Their factory warranties are gone, and we need to protect the investment of the community in those stretchers. And just for the record, we think about a stretcher, and we don't think about a great deal of money, but they now cost $20,000 apiece. We went back and forth. We had three proposals. We would like to go with the five-year plan. It offers the most savings to the county, and the cost of that is $21,586 over five years with five equal payments of $43.17. We still have some adjustments to make to the agreement, and what we're asking for tonight is the approval of this maintenance agreement pending the approval of the county attorney.
Okay, I think we talked about this a good bit last week in the work session. What he's asking for is a motion to approve, fund the approval of the county attorney reading the agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it is $21,586.50 in annual, pay that in fifths. Y'all know what it is. Is there a motion that we do this?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. The next item is the item with 12 now cardiac monitors and defibrillators. Maintenance agreement again, Director Brunn.
Yes, sir. Again, we're needing to protect the investment of the community on our three cardiac monitor defibrillators. I believe we got those in 2021 at a total cost of $113,288. That's $38,000 apiece roughly. The factory warranties have expired on those. These are what we do our EKGs with, vital signs, and monitor our patients, and also intervene in situations of cardiac arrest. We have a proposal from Phillips Corporation for an extended warranty. They call it their Connected Care Agreement for a total of $6,800 for two years. That's two equal payments of $3,400. This is for three cardiac monitors as well, so that's a good amount per unit. And we're also asking for a motion to approve this extended warranty pending the approval of the agreement with the county attorney.
Okay, you heard the request. We discussed it last week. Two payments on this one. Total 6810. I think I've 3405 annually with this one, and also if paid when the county attorney tells us to. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item 13 is the local legislative tax commissioner's compensation. You know, we met, she was in the meeting with us last Thursday. Director Dawson.
Chairman, Commissioners, in 1986, local legislation was created that set the compensation for the tax commissioner because at the time, there was no statewide compensation schedule for the tax commissioner. Tax Commissioner Danner has indicated that she's not going to seek reelection. And since that, since 1986, the General Assembly has created a compensation structure for the tax commissioner that is similar and equal to that of the clerk of court and that of the probate judge. And so now it would be time to, so in 1986, that legislation tied the tax commissioner's compensation to the clerk of superior court. And now that Tax Commissioner Danner is not, said she's not going to run, it would be time to decouple her compensation from the clerk of court and allow the state compensation schedule to take place. So Chairman, you are seeking a motion. We're seeking a motion to authorize you to contact our local legislative delegation and to ask them to introduce local legislation to... Not deenact. What do I want, Mr. Attorney?
To abolish?
To send it back to the state pay of the state for the tax.
To abolish that local.
Is that a motion giving me the authority to talk to Senator Anderson and Representative Leibert to introduce this local legislation when the General Assembly comes in session the first Monday, second Monday in January?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tankson. Any discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. The next item is now 14, air conditioners at the jail, Director Fisher. This has been a year of air conditioning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have before you three quotes. This is for the 20-ton unit that we've had some problems with as of late. This unit, we did replace two fans, and we had an inspection done on those fans. Three quotes are from McCutcheon Heating and Air, H&amp;H, and Augusta Chiller. Just a little bit of background information, that unit is 15 years old. The longevity of the unit is 12 to 15 years, so give or take, that unit's living on bar of time right now. So we need to make a decision whether or not, you know, we're just going to continue to monitor that system or we're going to replace it. There are some setbacks to both, but for the sake of the inmates and the staff that works in the jail, if that unit was to fail, the lead times on getting a new unit runs into the months, anywhere from four to six months. With the exception of Augusta Chiller, I talked again with Russell today, and he was willing to be able to get us a unit, depending on what brand unit we wanted. He could have us a train unit in December, or if we wanted a carry unit, he could get us one by January. If we go with the other two vendors, you know, again, we're looking at four to six months lead time. And there's also a third option, Dakin Air, which is a HVAC unit that Columbia County is now using in some of their new buildings, schools and such. That, he didn't price that unit because it's not a familiar brand, but we have train and carry units that are reputable, and I know that they last for quite some time. So what I'm asking the Chairman and Commissioners to do tonight is decide which brand we want to go with and look at the price on the quotes, but also keep in mind that our closest vendor as far as a turnaround is going to be Augusta Chiller. And he has also added that if the unit was to fail before the new unit got here, he has a 20-ton sitting on his laydown area that he could put up there and replace it until we get it in.
My relatives would be a train.
Yes, sir.
S-T-R-A-N-E.
Yes, sir. That's right.
All right, we got three, and I think you really kind of pushing Augusta Chiller because, did you say they would? I know you told me earlier that they put the last one in. They do a lot, they do most of the jail heating and air work anyway, don't they?
They did do a great deal of it. Russell put the last one in 15 years ago, so he knows. They've been out and looked at it. They also looked at the components to it, the thermostat, which, you know, if some of these older units are replaced, we have had component issues with thermostats. So seeing how they put the first one in, they kind of know what's up there and know what to expect. I'm not going to try to sway you in any direction towards any of the vendors, but it would be, I guess, my opinion that Augusta Chiller would be the most viable option we have at this time. Just due for one, that they know about what's up there because they put it in, and the other is they have a closer turnaround time than the other two vendors.
Yeah, you said about two months with them and four months with the other two?
Yes, sir. Give or take, two months with the other ones, four to six months lead time, which means that if it went out this winter, we would be scrambling to get some heat in the building, or we'd have to house the inmates somewhere else.
Well, you're not looking at $5,000 difference in any of them, but what's y'all wishing?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the quotes, and I see quotes from 36-2 of the, I guess, Augusta Chiller's the most expensive at $41,000. Is that right?
What you looking at, Commissioner Tankson? That's 36-2 plus the 32, so it's 39.5.
That's a, that's a, that's a optional automatic air freshener.
I see that now.
We don't, I mean, we're talking about $5,000, $6,000 difference between quotes. And, you know, do we know what sear, any of these units are?
Sir.
What sear they are? How efficient are either any of these units that they quote?
From what I understand, all the units are fairly efficient. And part of the efficiency would be able to utilize the automatic fresh air economizer, which that, I don't know why they listed that as an option because all units come with an economizer. Maybe they just thought that...
Take a vote.
That would be something that...
Put it in the form of a motion. Look for, go ahead. We can discuss it after we get a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for Augusta Chiller. I was a turnaround at times, basically, and he's got us backed up in case we get in a real bind, so make the motion.
We got a motion for Augusta Chiller. Yeah, Augusta Chiller. That's second to Commissioner Clyde's motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
We got a motion and a second to go with Augusta Chiller.
I have one question.
Commissioner Clyde?
Thanks for this, too.
We get, this gets into the discussion.
All right, sir. How are we paying for it? Who are we going to pay for this out there?
We're going to probably pay it out of sales tax, or ARP, one of the two. Is that right?
Yes, sir, Chairman. We would be able to pay for the new units out of SLOST 7 or our ARP funds.
Probably SLOST 7. Commissioner Tankson?
He tell you you can get it in two months. What happens at the end of two months, and you can't, and you got it?
Sir.
I'm just wondering what kind of guarantee that we have that he's going to have in two months.
And I asked him the same thing. He uses, from what I understand, the other two vendors use local salespeople, Russell. He says he's got dealers from Waco to Arkansas with different brands, and that's how he could guarantee delivery. However, you know, as times as they are with supply lines being cut and stuff like that, that was one of the things I asked him. I said, "Is that something you can guarantee?" He says, "Well, I," he says, "it's like this. He says, "They're all salesmen. They're going to tell you they got it." He says, "They do have them." He says, "But they will only ship it quantity." He said, "It may be a month before I can get, before they're shipping a unit this far south." I said, "Well, what are we doing in the meantime?" He said, "I have a 20-ton unit on a yard that we can sit in case that unit goes out." None of the other vendors have that asset, so that was, that's the gist of it. I mean, it's kind of a gamble any way you look at it, but I just try to look at the most favorable scenario and, you know, we're going on a promise of a vendor that's dealing with salespeople, and, you know, that's their job is to sell stuff. But even with the other two vendors, I know one of them, I believe, was a carrier unit, and they were like four months out, so they have to be dealing with somebody local to have that far of a lead time to where they can't get the unit for four to six months.
Well, we have a motion for Augusta Chiller.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins?
I just want to get something straight in my mind. Augusta Chiller, what's the lead time?
If we go with a train unit, we can have it by the end of December. If we go with a carry unit, it will be sometime in January.
We go with the carrier, end of, end of where for carrier?
January.
End of January.
January.
Yes.
Three months. At 41,357, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The third unit is a Dakin. If I understood him correctly, it may be a little cheaper, and that's something that they have set on the floor right now in a warehouse that he could ship, but...
Listen, we talking $40,000. I'm not looking for the cheapest one.
Exactly.
I'm looking for one that's the best, and I don't know much about heating and air conditioning, but I've heard all my life it is hard to beat a train.
Quality is what we're looking for, not necessarily what's the cheapest, but we want...
Let me say this. We got a motion and a second. We in discussion. All three of these are local companies. McCutchins is local. McCutchins did the, about a $50,000 job for us this year at the library. H&amp;H, a local company, they do a lot of work at the jail. We have a lot of, that's the 1991 model down there. But we're beginning to have a lot of problems with other things, plumbing, door locks, and a lot of other stuff that H&amp;H does. I didn't even know H&amp;H was in the heating and air conditioning business, but this happened. Augusta Chiller, they have done a lot down at the jail as far as the heating and air conditioning services go. I don't have a preference. They all, they all local people. That's the thing I like about it the best. But we do have a motion and a second. Is there any more comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dawson?
What is, if we went with H&amp;H, what's it going to cost you?
It's going to cost you $36,200. I don't know what kind of equipment they use on that train or what.
The only thing about H&amp;H is it's $39,500. The only thing about H&amp;H is it's 39.5 and that includes the economizer.
Okay, bounce feet.
Which I don't know
But if we don't use the economizer, it's 36-2.
Well, see, here's the thing.
Okay.
The other two units have the economizer included in the quote, I don't know why they would exclude that as an option because in my mind, especially when you, when you're heating and cooling a large space like, you know, the jail, especially with the kitchen because keep in mind, this is going over the kitchen, you want to be as economic as possible when you're, when you got air going in and returning. As far as power, I did not ask them about that, even though it kind of struck me kind of odd that the other two vendors included it in the price and they had it as an option. I think that would be something that we would want, but they're still the low bid at 39.5, you're just, you know, four to six months, you know, according to them, that's their lead time.
Everybody's quoting the gas pack, right?
That's, that's correct, everything is gas, yes, sir.
And is everybody else including the crane, the setting unit and everything?
So crane, cleanup.
That's a guaranteed job.
It is a guaranteed, yes, sir.
So you are saying that the 3,300 is got to go with it, that's really not an option, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, because if you look at Augusta Chiller, if you look down at the bottom where they've itemized their product, you're going to see the economizer that's, it's about the third one down from the bottom on that little chart there, you'll see that they included the economizer and I'm pretty sure if I read it correctly that um
Well, what, what concerns me more than anything else with a 15-year unit, we've already spent a little money on it trying to patch it up and put a Band-Aid on it.
Yes, sir.
We get into January, just 32 degrees outside and that thing goes out, we got prisons with no heat.
That's correct.
And that, that dog isn't going to hunt.
Yes.
The only difference is, is to me is if they can get it in quicker, but that's a decision up to y'all, we got a motion and a second, any more discussion, Commissioner Henderson?
All right, so just to make sure I understand this, if we go with Augusta Chiller and we sign this thing to buy and next week the unit blows up, is it going to be any cost to us to install the unit that Augusta Chiller has until they can get us one or?
Russell?
How's that going to work?
It would have to, because I think what would happen if that happened, they would put the unit they got in down there and what other one, they can't do nothing because they got to bring all the cranes and everything up there to get it, they going to have a lot of expense in it.
Russell said he would do whatever he had to to keep that unit running or put in a substitute unit until we could get a new one and he's the only vendor, nobody else mentioned that when I was on the phone with it, he said that he would go to the extent to do that if we needed it. I don't know of anybody else, I know H&amp;H doesn't because Russell said that he actually does a lot of work, H&amp;H actually subcontract all their HVAC work out. So, you know, you don't, you have a, an expert HVAC contractor that is subcontracted, H&amp;H, from what I understand, their HVAC mechanics is subbed out. But to answer your question, Russell said he would do everything he could to keep that unit running or replaced until we could get a new unit set. I did not ask him about the cost at that point because, you know, we're looking at housed inmates and staff inside the jail and, you know, if you ask Richmond County, there's a lot of liability in housing inmates in a facility that's not prepared for, that's just the, that's just the downside of it, if it goes out and we have to move inmates somewhere else and we're going to have to basically pay their rental bill until we can get a unit put in.
Let me give us a solution. If we can vote on the motion or we can ask the motion to be withdrawn or we can vote the motion down. R, this is the type of thing normally we do in a work session because of all the going back and forth, sometimes making calls and find out and then we bring it to the floor to vote on. If we don't vote tonight, we can get Director Fisher to find out some of these other things and we can call a meeting and decide what to do then, we don't have to wait till January, December to do it, we can have a call meeting for this. But as it stands now, we have a motion and a second on the floor. So there's no more comments, no more discussions, all in favor of the motion is on the floor, let me know saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. The motion is carried and we will travel with a train.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you.
That does go to Augusta Chiller, 41, whatever the price is with the car. Okay, we are back at 15 now to Farm Winery Alcohol Ordinance Second Reading, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Chairman. As Commissioners recall, last week, we had a long discussion about wineries and trying to balance what the folks who would like to have wineries want versus what the county needs to do to protect the county and the citizens. And I was instructed to contact some Commissioners around the state who already have these various wineries and Commissioner Tankersley was kind enough to have a three-way call with me, Commissioner Hartness from Havisham County and Commissioner Tankersley and Commissioner Havisham, in Havisham County, Mr. Hartness was kind enough to point out some things that I hadn't considered and so hadn't been considered. And also I contacted and spoke with Chairman Charlie Paris from Gilmer County and had a very nice conversation with Chairman Paris. I actually modeled a great deal of our ordinance after theirs, I felt like theirs was probably one of the best in the state.
Gilmer?
Gilmer County, yes, yes, Chairman. And same thing, Chairman Paris had some concerns that he felt we needed to look at and they have not been addressed, so by saying all of that, I'm asking if we could postpone this matter to next month so we can work on these in a work session and address these other matters so that we can protect everybody.
Mr. Jackson, I know that we have reached out to two parties, we are, we are in this discussion for the last 60 days probably because of two people that are sitting in here tonight and Mr. McCloud.
Yes, sir.
I think it's no question at all, five of the Commissioners are wanting to work with the two people who are going to have, growing the berries and having the wineries, the tasting rooms and everything that goes along with it. I know Mr. Jackson reached out to Mr. McCloud and we couldn't get a phone number for them, is that correct?
Actually, I called Mr. Keebler and someone answered it and it was hung up, so I never got a chance to
Machine parts hung it up, not him.
It was a cell number, I don't know what happened.
Be sure when we get, before you leave tonight, to give Mr. Jackson your phone numbers and line lines, both of you where we can get in touch with you, because we want to try to make it work the best we can to satisfy the two of you that are wanting to do this. We all want to see it, I think it's a tourist, become a tourist attraction for Lincoln and I think it would be good for Lincoln County. So we want to work with you, we're not trying to throw stumbling blocks in front of you to make it work. Might not be to get everything everybody wants, but we are reaching out to other counties to see what they doing, because this is our first time doing it and we want to try to have it, you know, right, sometimes they're not right and you have to go back and amend ordinance. But if y'all be sure that Mr. Jackson gets your number where we can get in touch with you, I know we got your
Email.
Email, because you sent something to us and we got that. To where we can talk again on it, I want y'all to be able to talk to him, because when he presents it to us, that's probably what's going to happen, so. Really need to talk to Mr. Jackson some way in here where we can try to get it worked, get everything worked out. I don't think we fall apart, I think we, you know, we third base and running the home plate, that's our close, but I don't want to do something too quick if we can wait another, another month, that's not going to affect y'all if you wait another month, is it? Okay, we got a recommendation, County Attorney that was suspended, second reading, and bring it back to the December meeting, is that a motion?
Yes.
The second?
I second.
Motion by Collins, second by Henderson, any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried, believe it or not. Item 16 is an appointment to the Animal Patrol Board.
Animal Services. Animal Services Board.
Animal Services Board, thank you. We changed that too, didn't we? Been a long time, I had a hard time getting one, these other four didn't have many. I would like to recommend and ask for a motion that we appoint to a four-year term on the Lincoln County Animal Services Board, Ms. Melissa Parks. I need a motion, I can't make it, if I could make one, I would, if they won't let me make a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion is our second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item 17, the Department of Election Board, we're not ready for that, item 17 is to adjourn, is that a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? To adjourn, the chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried, we stand adjourned.